Evening, everyone. Go ahead and make a call the meeting back to order here out of our closed session. Tom, any announcements?
Thank you. The City Council met in a closed session with respect to the item on the closed session agenda, and there is no reportable action, and that concludes the report.
All right. We'll go ahead and adjourn the closed session and move into a regular session. Debbie, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Nick.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Swanson.
Here.
Mayor Benoit.
Here. All right. Now, does somebody lead us in flag? I would love to. Mr. Mayor? All right. Please stand. Hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're actually going to delay presentations in a moment. We've got one more person on their way here, so we're going to go ahead and go right into public comment, if that's okay with everybody. We'll come back to presentations after council communications. All right. First, on public comment, since I saved him to the end of the meeting last time, Joseph, would you like to come down and give your public comment now?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. Let me start by complimenting you on the city birthday party. That was fun. Hot, but fun. I had a booth there for my campaign and met quite a few people, but most didn't start showing up until after about 6:30 or so because it was hot. If I can make a suggestion when it comes to the next city birthday celebration, let's bend the rules a bit and not have it in July. I know that that's the day we incorporate it, but why not do the Alice in Wonderland Unbirthday approach instead? Let's just choose a key weekend in late April and celebrate it then, kick off the events at that time. Anyway, so I've been out knocking on registered voters' doors in District 3, handing out campaign flyers. It's been a great experience. I've had nothing but positive responses, and I've found that the people are eager to engage with their city. I've had many conversations, some longer than others, and one common thread has been wanting better communication from the city. They've liked my idea about the e-newsletter and really liked the idea of town hall meetings. They want to be kept in the loop when it comes to things going on in their city, whether it's something as important as homeless issues and what the city is doing about it, or something less important, like the restriping of the roads, and they just want to be kept in the loop. And they'd like to have that before something happens, when possible. Seems correct. Anyway, I had one conversation with a man in his mid-70s, a Vietnam veteran, and an original Windsong homeowner that told me he'd given up on government, even on the local level. Actually, I've run into that type of newfound apathy more than once, but he came out and but he came straight out and said it. I don't know that we can actually change that type of thing with town halls and newsletters, but I say that we should try by increasing the communication to the residents on all levels. Thanks.
All right. Kenny Mays with time donated by Trudy.
The city claims that it needs and can properly spend the estimated $1.7 million that the sales tax measure would bring in. Why does this city not have an elected city treasurer, someone who actually lives in the city and will be held accountable to the voters? Why is the treasurer's report signed by James Riley, when he's not employed by the city of Wildomar, rather a company he is the manager of, Municipal Consulting Services LLC, is contracted by the city? If anything foul should occur, that LLC walks away unscathed, where an elected treasurer would have to answer to the citizens who elected them. The proposed Oversight Committee will be nothing more than the same thing we have with Measure Z, a committee that gets a glimmer of the details after the fact with no real power. It's time the city stopped the nonsense of giving away the snack bar, maintain and operate it with Measure Z funds, which was enacted to pay for maintenance, operations, and programs. Measure Z pays for the new refrigerator, the freezers, the electricity, the water, the health permits, so it can be operated for all, yet city officials give it away to what are nonprofits that cannot follow the law, without which there is no assurance that money is properly spent, as these organizations are not registered as required by California Government Code 12585, 12586, as spelled out in SB 1262, California, or yeah, California, no, approved by the governor September 29, 2004, which are part of the general statutory laws of the state, laws which each one of you council members swore to uphold when you took the loyalty oath upon taking office. The nonprofit is not registered. They should not benefit from any nonprofit discount, as the city should not be doing business with them until such time as they become properly registered. Many other cities rat out their snack bars to everyone, including legitimate nonprofits, on an hourly basis. They also require them to pay for any additional permits that may be required, and they're required to provide before and after reports detailing what they're doing, what was collected, what was spent, and donated. They also put a deposit down, just like when renting these council chambers. I will name a few that are not currently registered or are delinquent. ALS-1, never registered. Operation Prom Girl Southern California, recipients of the snack bar receipts on Saturday, July 28. Delinquent and failed to complete their initial registration. Wildomar Little League, delinquent since 2008, yet the city spends tens of thousands of dollars every year maintaining the ball fields in the cemetery for their exclusive use. District 28 Little League, sponsors of last year's Little League tournament, delinquent since 2004. Wildomar Historical Society, delinquent since June of this year, before that, never registered, yet you allow them to store items on city property. Wildomar Rotary Club Foundation, never registered. Social Work Action Group, never registered, yet they're reported to be receiving government funding from several cities. The list goes on. It's time to form a parks commission to oversee the maintenance, operations, and programs, putting this responsibility where it belongs, with the citizens and not the elected officials who use their power to benefit themselves. The many broken scout projects, such as a Freedom Swing, the dugout shade structures, the bulletin boards, et cetera, need a stop. This community lost funding for its parks at the beginning of the millennium, when the people voted to take away that funding, because they were being controlled by a few power-hungry individuals for their own benefit. It could happen again. Thank you.
Monty Gardner.
Monty. I'd like to preface this by saying the money that the city uses to handle the issue that I'm addressing does not come out of the general fund, because this is a trivial issue compared to what I listened to for several minutes tonight from these folks from Briarwood, and my heart goes out to them. With that said, I do want to thank the city for watering and mowing the Severo Road greenbelt. Actually, I want to thank the city for watering and mowing about 20% to 25% of the Severo Road greenbelt. This is a start. When do you plan on addressing the remaining 75% to 80% of this greenbelt? If you drive through Central Avenue's intersection with Severo Road, the greenbelt looks much improved from one month ago. But if you turn off Central Avenue onto Severo Road to enter Windsong Valley, as my neighbors and I do, in a little over 100 feet, you are back to completely manic type in greenbelt. A friend told me how to view older Google Maps Street View shots of a given location. I urge you to go to Google Maps Street View Severo Road and the location of the greenbelt, near the intersection of Prairie Road. Look at the green grass in 2011. 2011 was three years after the city of Wildomar took over this previously well-maintained greenbelt from Riverside County. Look at the dead grass and brown dirt today. Then ask yourself, is this what 10 years of local control is supposed to look like?
Okay. That's the last of public comment, unless I missed anybody. Go on, next. All right. I see that our person is here from Edison, Wright. We'll go ahead and do our presentations. And first presentation is W.R.Cock, presentation on the Gold Award to the city.
Thank you. Good evening, honor of mayor, members of the city council. My name is Anthony Segura. I'm an analyst with the Western Riverside Council of Governments, and I'm honored here today because the city of Wildomar has been an active participant in the Western Riverside Energy Partnership. And about a year ago, roughly this time in August, I came and gave a presentation for the city's achievement in silver, and today they're receiving gold, one step away from the platinum level. So, in an overview of the partnership, also known for short, REB, REB is a partnership between Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas Company, W.R.Cock, and 14 of its member jurisdictions, with the goal in mind of identifying and implementing energy efficiency retrofits in municipal facilities, but also providing sustainable best practices to the communities. Such a standard of best practices that the partnership has conducted is the Hall Daylight Exchange, but also we participated in the city's birthday celebration not too long ago. We appreciate working with the city and all the support that we have from city staff such as Jeanette Morales and Tina Roney. The reason the city of Wildomar reached this level is for their participation in Edison's Direct Install Program. This is a no-cost program where the city receives a consultation from a certified Edison contractor and installs either energy-efficient electric or gas measures. The reason I say gas is because SoCal Gas also has this program, and I'm looking forward to conduct this program for the city and identify any gas measures in the near future. To date, the city has received in participation with the Direct Install over 5,000 kilowatt-hours, and this is great, because the city needs a little bit to 10,000 to 12,000 to reach the next platinum level, and this will be received or achieved through the regional streetlight program. Once we retrofit those lights to LED, I'll be happy to say the city will be platinum, and that's the highest achievement on the Edison platform. I'm here today along with my colleague Joanna Chang from Southern California Edison, and we're here to provide the city of Wildomar with its Gold Level Tier Award. Thank you.
Great. You guys need me down there for that?
Yes, sir. If you'd like to come down along with members of the council, we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, we'll go over here. What does he have standing? Jeanette, you're a big part of this getting here. It really doesn't work.
All right. One, two, three. Yay.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you. On the next level.
All right.
With that, we will go into council communications. Great.
So, we had a few pictures. Jeanette, do you have the pictures? Of course, we had a 10th birthday celebration. Yes, it was hot, but it's hot in July. Oh, could you get him bigger enough? So, we had Tap Snap, the owner of Tap Snap does live in Wildomar, and we hired him for the birthday pictures, which put the sponsors on there, so it was a nice giveaway. And then this was the July 28th birthday, or 28th movie in the park. And then last weekend, we had the drive-in movie, August 4th. And then I gave a tour of some of city councils, or city chambers and city hall to some code scouts. And then just some other various movies, RTA.
City birthday was awesome, great, and Joe, you're right, it was super, super hot. I had a great time and my kid warmed up, so.
Well, we had RTA there with the bus, the U.P.'s.
Yeah, thank God.
Well, I'm sorry to say, I missed the celebration, but I was in Alaska, and it was very cool.
I didn't miss it. I swiped, I swiped the whole bottle over there. I missed the dining theater night, because it was my 39th wedding anniversary, and she wasn't going to let me neck in front of all you people, so I had to go to that one. We went somewhere else. That's it for me. There was not a whole lot going on in this last month, so.
It's been a little bit of a quiet month for me, too. A lot of the meetings are dark this month, but I did get out to Marietta, state of the city, and was neat to see the Marietta-Wildomar Chamber representing over there and throwing out Arnie as much as he heard Marietta, so it was nice. And then I've been actually actively working over in Elsinore a little bit, helping out our friends and neighbors over there with the fire. I've got some friends in the county supervisor's office, actually live up in that area, and if you, I'm going to try and put them on the big screen, we'll save it for later, since we're a little late in the meeting already, but basically right up in the back of the neighborhood there. If you look at me, and I'm looking a little ratty, it's because I've been out there with the fire and soot in my hair the whole bit, but just happy to see so far they haven't lost any homes on this side. They have found the guy that did it. He burned down his 10 neighbors' cabins in his own neighborhood and being held, so. Anyhow, rough time, but hopefully we'll get that fire under control. The good bit of news, if anyone remembers our former battalion chief, Steve Beach, is now, or former chief, now is battalion chief, and he's actually in charge of the Instant Command Center out there right now. That started about 9 o'clock this morning when he took over. I don't know if anyone else noticed, but about 10:30, 11 o'clock, there was a big change in the amount of support and amount of ground personnel. That's Steve Beach. So, we owe him a big thank you, and he's doing a great job out there, working hard for us and working hard for the city of Elsinore, too.
All right. With that, we'll go into public comment. Before that, on the approval of the agenda, Matt, do you still need me to move item 2.1?
No, we're good.
We're good? Okay, that person made it here? Great. All right. We'll go through the approval agenda as is presented.
So.
Is that good?
Is that so what?
So moved.
Oh, okay.
She got her second name quickly.
Any opposed? All right. With that, we'll go on to the consent calendar. I have a comment section on the consent calendar. I have Kenny Mays for quite a few items with time donated by Trudy Currie, so we'll go over six minutes for him. Kenny, come on down.
First one's 1.4, request for temporary storage container placement in Martin O'Brien Park. This container is going to be placed in such a location that the park site cannot be seen by the park's cameras. This container and the current container need to be moved to a location that can be observed and recorded by the park's security cameras on all sides, or the camera needs to be installed on a blind side. The current container also occupies two spaces, and this container is described as being the same size, and is supposed to occupy one space. How are they going to do that? When that space is 19 feet long, this container will extend one foot into the drive aisle, and with the doors open, five feet into the drive aisle. Why is the city not charging for the use of that space? Martin O'Brien currently has 164 parking spaces, and the citizens are going to lose at least one, possibly two other spots, along with the two that they've already lost, which they pay for and maintain with their taxes. It's time to stop giving it away. You charge everyone, including nonprofits, for the use of this room, why not the limited number of parking spaces? I would also like to congratulate the Tri-City Gators Youth Football and Cheer, a domestic nonprofit formed in January of this year for being registered with the Registry and Charitable Trust within the timeframe required by law, unlike so many nonprofits doing business with this city. Item 1.5, Little Free Library Exchange Box at Windsong Park. In a background discussion, stated that Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization. Well, this is true. This Little Free Library, library's only connection to that organization is its charter. As this is set to become property of the city, will that charter be registered to the city? There's also no mention of the sponsor plaques, which will be attached to the library post with the names of those that made donations of $100 or more. This should have been noted in the staff report, as two council members' names will be on that plaque. And who will be responsible for keeping this Little Free Library stocked? Will it be the city's responsibility? This is not mentioned in the staff report. Another concern is this box, is this box's selected location visible to the park's security camera, where an identifiable photo can be recorded, should it be damaged? 1.10, or second reading, about the aggressive and intrusive solicitations. These new improved rules will not solve the issue people are complaining about. Waltons in Elsinore did not close because of panhandlers. Elsinore's, Albertson and Wildomar is not hurting because of panhandlers. The people have not complained in numbers about panhandlers. The issue is the homeless that are camping throughout the city and the wasteland they leave along with the crimes they bring in the neighborhoods where they're camped. The city has failed to update the citizens about what the coalition the city joined is doing. The only thing we hear about is you hooking up with another nonprofit that is not properly registered with the Attorney General. Thank you.
Council, any questions on consent calendar items or anything? Cool. Nothing? All right. The promotion on the consent calendar.
So. So moved.
Thank you. Any opposed? Order. All right. Listen to public hearings. Go ahead and open up the public hearing on item 2.1, placing a 1-cent sales tax action on the November ballot. Tom?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, this item was before you at your last meeting on July 11th. It's a recommendation that the city council submit to the voters at the election on November 6th, an ordinance to impose a 1-cent sales tax. At your meeting on July 11th, you heard testimony from residents, from city departments, including the police department, and the fire department, and your city manager regarding the financial impacts of this proposed ordinance, and I don't intend to cover all of that. Again, it's already in the record. However, at your July 11th meeting, the council also discussed possible changes to the ballot question, but adopted the resolution as presented. Staff has had an opportunity to discuss those possible changes to the ballot question with the city consultant, the Lou Edwards Group, who reviewed the survey data results and recommends adding the words "and improving" to the ballot question, so that it reads as follows. The Wildomar Public Safety and City Services Measure to Protect Wildomar's Financial Stability, Small-Town Character by Maintaining and Improving, those are the two words that will be added, and improving, Local Police-Fire Protection, 911 Emergency Response, and then it goes on to use the exact same language as in your previous meeting. Additionally, staff sent the proposed ordinance to the State Board of Equalization for their review, and they responded that everything was, that everything looked good, except for one minor change, which was to change the name of the Board of Equalization to the Department of Tax and Fee Administration. So, that change was made in the ordinance attached, and that concludes the report. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Got some public comments on this. First up, Monty, with time donated by Jerry Orchard, so six minutes?
I'm not going to take six minutes.
I appreciate it.
I was afraid you might cut us back to two, like you did last week. Marietta's proposing a 1-cent sales tax ballot measure, which it passed, is expected to raise $14 million. Using approximate population numbers of 105,000 for Marietta and 36,000 for Wildomar, and Marietta's expected revenue of $14 million and Wildomar's expected revenue of $1.7 million, Marietta will generate $133 per resident, or 2.8 times Wildomar's anemic $47 per resident. Why this large disparity? Marietta has a robust retail tax base. Wildomar has an ace hardware, a couple grocery stores, a tire shop, fast food joints, and gas stations. This is further evidence of Wildomar's dismal long-term financial viability prognosis. I do agree with this statement, "We are here now," which I take as, we need to make the best of our unenviable position of being a city lacking enough funds to provide adequate basic city services. Therefore, I will grudgingly support the proposed 1-cent sales tax ballot measure, but only if it will be used to improve, not maintain, public safety services. I'm glad to see you've made this change. I don't think it goes as far as it should, but I'm glad you made the change. However, much of what I hear and read about this ballot measure is eerily like the overly optimistic propaganda I recall coming from the Wildomar Incorporated Now Committee prior to the ill-fated vote for Wildomar's cityhood, when those who recognized Wildomar's lack of a robust retail tax base would doom it to a life of municipal poverty were dismissed as Wildomar haters. Many residents already believe this tax will remedy the litany of city issues listed in tonight's ordinance, most of which are publicized in the city's July 13 press release. Judging by comments I read on Mr. Martin Pito's blog, a substantial portion of my fellow voters have already drunk the Kool-Aid. Here are the facts. $1.7 million won't begin to resolve Wildomar's financial woes. It's certainly not the panacea being expoused by its proponents. If we spent the entire $1.7 million on police, we would still not exceed the county's patrol deputy per thousand residents ratio of 0.75, and they'd get CHP traffic enforcement. The allocation of $2 million of the returned VLF fees on July 1st of this year only raised Wildomar's ratio from .31 to .54. Spending $700,000 on a fire department manned pickup truck, not to mention addressing the homeless and Wildomar's failed and failing roads, only make matters worse for police manning. And let us not forget that second fire station. Please be clear, accurate, and forthright when pushing this ballot measure. Whenever I perceive an inaccurate or misleading statement, whether vocal or written, I will endeavor to publicly correct it. In conclusion, here's a current example of an inaccurate and therefore very misleading to the average resident comment. I heard from civic leaders, no, I heard this from civic leaders multiple times, different ones of you, at the last city council meeting. By taking our VLF fees for the past six years, the state has put us in a $12 million hole. Truth is, the state did not put Wildomar in a $12 million hole. The state caused the city to not spend the $12 million that was taken away from them on essential public safety services. Where's the $12 million hole?
Next up, Joseph Marvito.
Good evening again. There's a lot to say on this topic, but I'll keep it short. As a reminder, I didn't favor Wildomar becoming a city, because it was very easy to see that we didn't have the proper tax base to support it. That's water under the bridge at this point. We're here now. I think I picked up the word. Though as a voter, I'm generally against tax increases, as a candidate for city council, I support putting this on the ballot and allowing the people to decide. It's not hypocritical, it's pragmatic. I know that the city council's job is to protect the residents, and that is with full measures of police, fire, code enforcement, and well-maintained roads. Those things take money, lots more money than we have now, and even if we bring in the additional $1.7 million that's being talked about here, we'll still be very underfunded compared to other cities. Now, as a potential city council member, I suggest a yes vote from the citizens, from the voters, but I fully understand why the average person might want to vote it down. Now, here's some food for thought. For a city that's looking to add an additional penny to the local sales tax, one would think you'd first allow commerce in regards to illegal commodity, cannabis, instead of gifting that lost tax money to other communities. Anyway, now, the other day, someone left a comment slash question on Wildomar rap about proposed tax increase, about this one. And I told him that I'd be happy to read his comment to the council to give them an idea of how part of the electorate feels about it, so quote, "How transparent and trustworthy has Wildomar city government been with funding in the past? I'm asking about this proposed increase in sales tax, 1 cent. I would be amenable, but I absolutely abhor government stealing funds designed for one purpose, to spend on other items, usually handouts, insane pensions, cronyism payoffs, et cetera. Our current state governor and most of the legislature, SB 1 Gas Tax/...
we didn't have the proper tax base to support it. That's water under the bridge at this point. We're here now. I think I picked up the word. Though as a voter, I'm generally against tax increases. As a candidate for city council, I support putting this on the ballot and allowing the people to decide. It's not hypocritical, it's pragmatic. I know that the city council's job is to protect the residents, and that is with full measures of police, fire, code enforcement, and well-maintained roads. Those things take money, lots more money than we have now, and even if we bring in the additional 1.7 million that's being talked about here, we'll still be very underfunded compared to other cities. Now, as a potential city council member, I suggest a yes vote from the citizens, from the voters. But I fully understand why the average person might want to vote it down. Now, here's some food for thought. For a city that's looking to add an additional penny to the local sales tax, one would think you'd first allow commerce in regards to illegal commodity, cannabis, instead of gifting that lost tax money to other communities. Anyway. Now, the other day, someone left a comment slash question on Wildomar rap about proposed tax increase, about this one. And I told him that I'd be happy to read his comment to the council to give them an idea of how part of the electorate feels about it. So, quote, "How transparent and trustworthy has Wildomar City Government been with funding in the past? I'm asking about this proposed increase in sales tax, one cent. I would be amenable, but I absolutely abhor government stealing funds designed for one purpose, to spend on other items, usually handouts, insane pensions, cronyism payoffs, et cetera. Our current state governor and most of the legislature, SB 1 Gas Tax/BLF." Then asking for more to pay for what was supposed to have been done in the first place. "How certain can we be that the extra income will go to public safety services, roads, et cetera?" Unquote. So. Now, I didn't see the above as an indictment of Wildomar's leaders, but it's just a general distrust for all, and distaste for all government, which extends to the local level, too. And I, he asked, and I said, "Well, you know, I trust the people that are in charge here." But, anyway, so I just thought I'd pass that along. Thanks.
All right. That's the end of the public comments. This, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel communication or counsel questions on this item?
Yeah, I do have something. Yeah, I'm not a, I'm not a one cent guy. I never have been, never will be, but this is a fact that the city has to take on, and it's got to be the voters that decide it. My personal opinion is, I don't like taxes, and it's always been that way. I said that from the get-go, the only way you're going to make a city thrive is by commerce, commercial businesses, but people in our audience here and people in this area sue everything, stall everything, and cause nothing but grief in the city. And then everybody comes to us and says, "Why can't you do this? Why can't you do that?" Well, there's, there's a reason right there. If we're not fighting the lawsuit, perfect example, subway over there on Bundy Canyon, one business in a big complex, one, because he fought that fight for a year and still ended up paying for something that didn't even need be done. It's over and over again in the city. The city, that, all we can do as a city is make it easy for businesses to get here and get started and produce income. That's how you raise ta, that's how you raise tax money. When it comes to the sheriffs, yeah, Riverside County has one to whatever, whatever the ratio is, of course they have that, but they have a lot of money, too, besides what we have. We get 1% of the 11%, and that's what we get. And now we get our little DMV fees, which still doesn't add up to what we should have been getting. So, to compare us with a county of billions of dollars and a small city with not so much, and fighting the fight, and fighting to get people to be able to open here, get commerce going, and collect income, that's how you do a city. If I was, if I was running as a business, it's advertising, getting people to use me, getting people to do, and the same thing with the city. I'm all for this thing going on the ballot because it has to be, each person has to sign in for it, and all the other cities are doing it. I get that. But I was against it when Los Angeles first enacted their one cent thing. I thought, what a ripoff that was. And here it comes down here. Well, I'm a conservative, and I run on the money that I have. That's how we do things. I run my business that way, and that's the way we do it. So, but, I'm with the rest of them. We're going to put it out there and let the people decide it, because that's the, that's the democracy way at this level. And I am a representative, and I didn't want to be involved in saying, "Hey, we're going to have a tax, and there's five of us that are going to decide it." No, that's not going to work in this, this instance ever. So, I'm all for it. Let's go. Make a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right.
With the language changed.
With the language changed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That brings us to item 2.2, the zoning ordinance for memorandum 1801, sign regulations. And we'll open up the public hearing on this. Staff presentation, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, the proposal before you tonight is a code amendment sponsored by the Inland Valley Medical Center. Would like to install a new LED freeway sign to replace their existing freeway sign along the 15 freeway. The project does require a code amendment to our sign regulations to allow this. The new sign will allow the hospital to better advertise their services. So, specific highlights of the code amendment are as follows. Medical centers are defined to include hospitals and their medical office buildings providing health care services. Only one LED sign permitted per individual medical center with a minimum size of five acres. It will only be permitted in the CPS and IP zones adjacent to the I-15 freeway. And then the size of the sign cannot exceed 360 square feet per sign face and be no taller than 50 feet in height. Messaging can only display onsite hospital messages and city-sponsored messages. This is the same as what we did for the Wildomar Square LED sign years ago. Must comply with our city's light pollution ordinance to maintain our dark sky policies. The provisions of the code amendment are provided in the MOU between the city and Inland Valley Medical Center. And as staff's direction, the applicant, prior to the planning commission meeting, met with John Garrett, and based on those discussions, positive changes were made to the proposed MOU and the requirements that he wanted to see to protect the dark skies. And those are, are reflected in the final design regs that were reviewed by the planning commission, and I'll mention that in a sec. And the applicant has also agreed, as part of the MOU, to place our city lane, city Wildomar, at the top of the sign, which will be highly visible as you go northbound, excuse me, northbound on the 15 and, and southbound as well. So this is a, just an illustration of the sign. The LED square there with the happy face and that little kid has our city Wildomar name on it, and the Inland Valley, excuse me, Inland Valley Medical Center text along with their logo. The exhibit on the right is the night sky view of what it will look like. That incorporates all of the changes that John Garrett had proposed with the applicant, and I know they're here tonight to provide some feedback on this. So, we researched whether adjacent cities had done with their freeway LED signs, you know, Marietta and Lake Elsinore and Temecula have signs. The outlet mall sign is 750 square feet per sign face. That's 1,500 total square feet, and is 78 feet tall. The proposed sign tonight is little, little under half that size. The storm sign is 672 square feet, 56 feet tall. Marietta, giant RV LED signs, about 300 square feet and 45 feet tall. And the Temecula auto mall sign is almost 500 square feet and 76 square feet in tall. I have some exhibits here. The outlet mall sign on the left, the storm stadium LED sign on the right, the auto mall in Temecula on the left, and the giant RV sign on the right. So, the planning commission reviewed the code amendment at its July 18th meeting. We have four public speakers, including the applicant's team and John Garrett, who expressed support. Based on the input, the planning commission adopted PC Resolution 2018-15, recommending council approval of this code amendment and adoption of a sequel exemption. Staff tonight is also recommending, as, as part of the project, an additional action to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and Inland Valley Medical I should conclude my comments. Okay. It's not moving anymore. I'd be happy to answer any questions in my tab.
Very good. Let's go ahead and take a couple comments here first. Giles?
Giles?
Yep.
I've been called worse, too.
I couldn't see that first name. Was it Jane?
Jared.
Jared.
Yes, I'm Jared Giles. I'm the chief operating officer of Health and Care over Inland Valley and Rancho Springs. I won't take too much of your time, but I want to thank you for working with us on this initiative. We're very excited to make this improvement at our facility. And next will be our vendor.
Sure. All right. Rainey?
Is that an Oathian or a Rhino? Ariana. Ariana, I don't know.
There you go. Ariana. Got it.
That's an A.
Again, I've been called worse things, so. My name is Ariana Devario of Electromedia Inc. on behalf of Inland Valley Medical Center. I'd first like to say thank you to planning staff and Mr. Bossy for all his help on this project. I'd also like to say thank you to the planning commissioners and their recommendation of approval. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank all of our council members who have helped us throughout this whole process. I've had the distinct pleasure of speaking with all of you, so thank you very much for your time and meeting with me personally if you did, or speaking with me over the phone or both, in certain cases. As Mr. Bossy mentioned, we will be adhering to the lighting regulations, and we did meet with John Garrett, which was a very successful meeting. He has provided his support, and we revised the lighting for the identification letters on the sign per his direction. We also will be complying with all Caltrans regulations. There will be no motion, no animation. We will have static images, and we also increased the hold times on those static images from five seconds to eight seconds per the planning commission as well. We also added a limit to the text that can be on each frame, so instead of unlimited lines of any sort of text, we have a 15-line limit as well. Other than that, if there's any further questions, I will be here to answer, and again, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Counsel comments, questions?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I have one question, sorry. I had asked about doing the wait times. Could we be able to look into that? Did you see that in Corona, they will put how long the wait time at the ER is?
Right.
I did look into that, and that is something we can't do. So it's simply what's called an RSS feed, and we can program that into the software, and as it's updated at the hospital, it'll immediately update on the sign.
Okay, great.
Counsel, you agree with him?
We are. And Electromedia Inc., my company, will be programming and maintaining the sign, so you will have 24 to 48-hour turnaround on any maintenance issues and programming requests as well, extended to the city for their ads in addition.
Good. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Comments? Yep.
I hadn't paid a whole lot of attention to the sign that's there now. So you brought my attention to a new sign. The sign that's there now is absolutely terrible. I don't know if anybody else has noticed. And the idea of having the name "City of Wildomar" on it, I think that's been our biggest problem to, to get some new business here. They don't know where we are, they don't know who we are. And to be able to have the name up on both of those signs to identify us pretty soon is going to cook. And there is a city of Wildomar, and I know where it is now. May help us get some more businesses in here. I, I agree with Tim. That's how a city's got to run, is to have tax-producing businesses here. But the sign is going to be absolutely gorgeous.
Doo-doo. Can't wait to see it. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I did meet with them, and it was a really great improvement over the old sign. I love that. And I do like that the, the hospital is getting their name out there even more. That's why Kaiser always builds next to freeways. So it, it helps our little city and to highlight our hospital that's sitting here that's open and ready for business. And I do like the ER so many minutes, you know? My business runs on 30 minutes or less, so I don't know if that's going to work out for you guys, but that's, anyway.
Sometimes you want the fastest doctor.
Yeah, I know. I can't help myself. But I am excited to see it. It's going to be a nice improvement to the side of the freeway and to your new location and everything that you're doing over there.
Very good. All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
I will make that motion.
First.
Second.
Oh, I got to read the ordinance.
Separate actions, you have to, please read the ordinance.
Yeah. All right. So first, I'll do a motion on ordinance number 156, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wildomar, California, adopting a general rule and categorical exemption in accordance with section 15061B 3 and 15311A, respectively, of the sequel guidelines and improving zoning ordinance amendment 18-01, amending section 17 dot 252 sign regulations of the Wildomar Municipal Code to establish regulations for freeway-oriented electronic or rapidly display LED signs for medical centers adjacent to the 15 freeway located in the CPS or IP zones.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That item carries all ayes. Item number two, that's not an ordinance, so don't have to read that, so anyone make a motion on item number two.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries all ayes. On three, the zoning ordinance amendment 1802R1, time extension procedures, this will be ordinance number 157. I'm going to read the ordinance title first, Matt. This will be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wildomar, California, adopting a general rule exemption in accordance with section 15061B 3, a sequel and approving zoning ordinance amendment 1801, or sorry, 1802R1, amending section 17 dot 196, variances section 17200, conditional use permits 17208, public use permits, and 17216 plot plan permits of the Wildomar Municipal Code, modifying the existing time extension procedures. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I got a brief presentation. Jeanette, would you please do me the honors? Next slide. So, staff presented the original amendment. You notice that we call the ZOA 1802R1. This is a revision to what we originally proposed, proposed to the planning commission back in May. That amendment was proposed to create processing features for time extensions for CPUs, PUPs of plot plans to match what we council did back in December for subdivision maps. The original proposal was to have the planning director approve EOTs, as I do now, have that authority, and I'll get into an explanation in a few minutes about that. The original proposal extended the timeframe from three years. Currently, plot plans in these applications have a two-year timeframe to start construction, and then you can propose three-one-year time extensions. Part of what we're doing now will allow the initial approval to be three years and then six years of time extensions with those categories there, the first one being three years, two years for the second one, and one year for the following one. Next slide, please. So, prior to scheduling the council meeting for this project, we decided to amend the proposed EOT procedures to make it more consistent with parcel maps and track maps. There are basically two changes that we made. One was changing the approval authority from the planning director to the planning commission. Reason being, you know, with the decision to have these applications be extended for six possible more years, we felt that it's more important to have the planning commission make that decision, or before it was just a simple little one-year time extension. The second part is, we want to be able to provide mailing notices to property owners surrounding the project, like we do with public hearings. It won't be noticed in the paper, but we will send out notices of the meeting to everyone within a 600-foot radius of the site where this EOT is being requested. Next, please. So we believe that the changes are appropriate for basically three reasons. As I mentioned, you know, six years worth of time extensions, it's a best practice to have the planning commission approve that rather than administratively at staff level. Sending out the notice of property owners will facilitate better discussion at these meetings when the EOTs come up, and then the new process will now match what the process is for parcel maps and track maps. So the planning commission reviewed, reviewed the revised code amendment at its July 18th meeting. We had no public speakers on the agenda item. The commission supported the changes in vote of 502, request or recommend council take an action to adopt a general rule exemption and approve ZOA number 18-02R1. That concludes my comments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. I don't have any comment cards. Anyone want to comment? I once, my wife, so I'll close the public hearing. Counsel comments, questions?
No. That's good.
All right. Don't be, any other updates to this right now? This is it?
Correct unless you direct me to the other list.
Okay. All right. I'll look for a motion.
Do you approve more to number 157?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item moves, all ayes. All right. That brings us to streetlight financing implementation agreements. Who's on first? Dan? Or our city manager in lieu?
Thank you. I'll take this item. This item's been before you several times. In fact, we initially came to you in 2015 to initiate the process, vision from WRCO to assist the cities within the region to purchase streetlights. We've met on several occasions. The last time we had met, March 2018, I'm sorry, October 2016, we actually executed a purchase and sales agreement and a license, a light pole license agreement that has now been approved, so we are in the process of acquiring our streetlights. As far as status update, the CPUC approved our purchase and sale agreement, March 23rd, 2018. SCE is now on task to do their work, and is scheduled to complete in September of 2018, which leads us to this resolution. This resolution covers four key items, and it's the next in step. And this resolution will authorize a city manager to implement these agreements, to sign and execute a purchase. sign and execute a purchase, equipment lease and purchase agreement with Bank of America, an escrow agreement with Bank of America, Wilmington Trust and National Associates, the paid agent, same group. And then also, the other important piece is an implementation agreement with Western Riverside Council of Governments. What that implementation piece does is, once the streetlights come into the city's control, then through the WRCOG process, we will start retrofitting the lights. As you heard tonight, once we retrofit the lights, we'll actually get a platinum status with SCE, which is pretty exciting. And with that agreement, WRCOG will, through their contract with Siemens, also maintain the lights. So, that completes my presentation, and we're happy to get into the weeds on any one of the topics as, as your desire is.
All right. Before we get into that, I do have Ken Mase, comments on this?
Purchase of the streetlights by the city is a good idea. Purchasing of the streetlights with any involvement by, with WRCOG is a bad idea. Well, one only has to look at the pitfalls and complaints of their hero program. The city is going to take on its first real debt by getting in bed with the devil. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on this? Council communications, comments?
No.
I'm looking forward to this. Really can't wait to see those new lights going up and to see the LED lights going in, and especially getting the lights out of the bedrooms and front windows of so many homes and of our neighbors, so many streets, so.
Yeah, and WRCOG's done a good job with the hero, as far as I'm concerned, because I have a hero thing. It's worked out really well for me, and it's easy to do, so I like it.
Yep. My neighbor just put solar on his rooftop, a new barn we put up last month, so yeah, it's been amazing program. All right.
I will move to approve Resolution 2018-42.
I will second that.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That item moves, all ayes. City manager report, you have an update from the library that, starting on Tuesday, September 4th, 4th and the 18th, from 1:00 to 2:30, there will be an adult coloring group that will be meeting in the Waldemar Library. Coffee and tea will be provided. We'll have a good turnout there. So, I want to get that out. And then, Dan York, city manager report.
I did want to just mention that we do have our neighbors up to the north of us that are battling the fire. We have been in touch with their city manager's office. They currently don't have a need for us. Our city clerk would like to provide you an update on the candidates.
Yes. We have, we're right towards the end of the nomination period right now, and as it stands, we have four official candidates. In District 1, we have Ben Benoit has qualified for the ballot. He's this guy that comes in from time to time.
Benoit.
And in District 3, we have two candidates. We have Tim Walker and we have Joseph Morabito. And in District 5, we have one candidate, our own Marcia Swanson. So, because all three incumbents have qualified for the ballot, the nomination period will end this Friday at 5:00 PM. I am here on Fridays. Just come to the door and knock really loud, because I'm not as close to the door as I used to, but you can always call my phone that's right there on my desk, too. But we will not have an extension of time, and we, we cannot, even though we have two districts that only have one candidate, because you've got a measure on the ballot, you cannot stop an election in any of the districts, and that's the law. So, that's the update for now, and I have heard nothing from the public on anybody wanting to come in and pull papers or anything, so it's Wednesday night. Look, we've got two days left, but as you remember, we have had somebody come in on the last day.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. Just one last thing. Mr. Mayor, we will have the astronomy night, August 18th, at 6:00 PM at Marno O'Brien, for those of you who are interested. And then on September 8th, at 6:00 PM, the movie mariachi night, also at Marno O'Brien Park. And I'll turn the microphone back over.
Thank you. Yeah, I found my photos finally, so just throw this out there. We did have a little fire in town. It was a CRNR waste truck that, as they call it, got a hot load, which means there were either charcoals or some other thing in the, that went into the truck and caused a fire. Luckily, the truck pulled over right away and found a safe spot to drop his load, and I don't have the picture of the truck there, but he was, the truck was actually fine. This happened in Marietta about a week before this, and that truck almost is, I think it's totaled. It was, it was burned up really bad. It was a waste management truck, and unfortunately, he couldn't find a safe place to deploy fast enough, and that truck got, pretty much, the whole, all three back tires were gone, and the back of the truck. So, here's some photos from the, Jonathan Ingram at the Marietta State of the City. Andy Morris actually was the person leading that there for the chamber, so it was nice to see. Again, they had our Waldemar Marietta Chamber Conference logo up there, so they had to keep throwing Waldemar on all the slides. This is this morning. The truck down there that's 03108 on the right, that's Steve Beach's truck. So, that was where he was at, along with all those trucks you see in the background there, all LA Fire Department trucks, LA County, along with trucks from off the left of this, you can't see, or trucks from Indio and all around our county as well. So, this is when they're getting ready this morning. This is where I was at this afternoon, and Waldemar did help out a little bit. So, the Waldemar, at least one Waldemar police car was up there helping out, me and me and Elsinore area. So, Chief, I don't know if you saw that, but they, I'm guessing they just borrowed our car, because it was probably the last one left at the station. There was a lot of response in there. I think I saw 25, 30 different sheriff vehicles of some type, detective cars, everything else. They were doing a great job getting everybody out of that neighborhood and getting everybody safe, so. Happy to see our, happy to see the city of Waldemar name up there, too. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Oh, excuse me, future agenda items. You have any future agenda items? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting. We're adjourned this meeting to September, we're adjourned it to September 19th. We have a different date for that meeting, so we could get out to the League of Cities meetings that are happening on the 12th. So, everyone knows that. The council meeting next week or next month will be on the 3rd Wednesday, September 19th.